To a ninety-five foot ladder, just to give us that extra twenty feet of reach if needed. The quote we got back from E one to replace equivalent to our truck were at one point seven to one point nine million dollars. Um, again, that's a pretty basic standard truck. Uh, and quite honestly, we do not have them funds available to us. Um, and that build time was approximately two to three years on a build time. And that was with their fast track program. Um, if we were not in part of the fast track program, then we're probably looking at three to four years build time. On uh, the fast track program with that allows you to do, allows you to keep the truck simple, basic, not allow. Uh, add a lot of accessories to it. And uh, they're, they're knocking them out a little bit quicker, but anytime you customize something, then you're adding longer build time to it. Uh, we did find uh, through a company, it's called Brenly Mountain Fires Apparatuses. Um, we had purchased used trucks from them in the past in order to get by and keep functioning. Um, I called the sales rep, they just happened to um, be informed that they are going to be taking delivery of a used truck. And it's actually a two thousand eight Pierce Velocity uh, Quint. It's got a seventy-five foot ladder. The good thing about this is the truck came from uh, would be coming from Long Island, New York. In a small subdivision that did not get used very often, the truck currently has seventeen thousand miles on it. They just simply did not use it, um, but they have the funds to buy them a new one, so their new one is coming. So to them, they don't want a seventeen thousand mile truck, so it's up for grabs. Uh, the cost is just a little over five hundred thousand dollars to purchase the truck. Um, we have not seen this truck in person yet, just pictures of the truck, um, some questions answered about it, so on and so forth. If we were able to achieve the funding that we're looking to get, we would be flying out to take a look at this truck firsthand. To even make sure we're confident and even going forward with spending money on a truck. Um, if we decided that we did like the truck and want to go ahead and purchase it. How it works is it goes to Brenly Mountain, which is down in Huntsville, Alabama, they get the truck. They go through and they refurbish anything that we find wrong on it within a certain perimeters. If it needs tires, they'll put new tires on it, they'll do all the tests on it to make sure the ladder test passed its test. Make sure um, the pumps all pass their test. And then when we get it shipped to us and it has a one year warranty on it on the power train through Brenly Mountain. So we're not just buying just a used truck, it's actually being repurposed, kind of re-up, up to date, recertified. And then it will also have a one year warranty on it. So that was uh, where we were basically at with our request is uh, to try to get two hundred and fifty thousand to help go towards the purchase of the truck.
Thanks, Jason. I'm gonna open for questions, but before I do, I just want to say a couple of things. Uh, why are we considering this request? Uh, a, a person might think that once a fire, once we contribute money to a fire. Truck, we'd be asked for money for a lot of fire trucks. Um, and that's true, and, and that's something we probably couldn't handle. Uh, and so in consideration of this, we had asked ourselves, why are we considering your request? And basically, uh, one of the things you said when you started off is, is the reason we are. Uh, you service our, our TIFs, two of them, right, and West Harrison?
And St. Leon.
And, and St. and St. Leon, so, so uh, it, it's important to us. And uh, because you do operate an R TIF, it's, it's legal and reasonable that we would consider your request. Uh, so why are we having a meeting on a Monday night, we're gonna have another one next Monday? That's because uh, you indicated in your request that timing was the importance, so we've arranged a special meeting to do that. And the first question I wanted to ask is uh, if, if fire truck lasts twenty-five years, how many years will be left on the truck you want to acquire?
So according to NFPA standards, we would maybe get eight years out of it, according to their standard. Um, my hopes are is to try to push it past that point. And make it last even longer with it having only seventeen thousand miles on it. Uh, I, I don't see a reason why we couldn't make it last longer than that.
As soon as your last truck dead, and so it seems to me the next eight years would probably be saving for a new truck.
That, that would be the goal.
Hey, uh, let me, let me turn this over to, to the uh, redevelopment commission, any other questions that you all have developed?
Why, uh, I mean, it seems like you kind of knew that this fire truck was gonna maybe replace some point in the near future. Why was there no plan in place to replace it up until the urgency of, of like today?
We were trying to get by with making it last, uh, last year we obtained money from uh, the township, Miller Township. To put a, basically a rescue truck in place and. That station up, Station One where the Quint is currently at, that was the first out truck for every call. So we've been trying to lessen the load and responses that it required to have, we were hoping to stretch it out. But quite honestly, we don't have the appropriate funding to save up for trucks. I mean, our budget, money that we give in, that is all the money that we have won out. And with only one cumulative fund tax in place, which is in Miller Township. That was, basically, we sit on that pot, hope it to continue to grow. And the, the goal was to hope it would continue to grow before we would need a Quint. Um, last year took a big hit to us on just trying to keep it running. This year it's not getting any better. And at some point, we have to look at uh, see forty, almost sixty, seventy thousand dollars in the past five years, just to try to keep it running. And when, when are we to the point where we're done throwing good money at a bad truck? And the truck has over a hundred thousand miles on it, so. We're, we're kind of just in a spot where unfortunately, we didn't have time for the cumulative fund to continue to build, just to be able to pay for the entire thing. But that was the plan, it was actually on the list to be the next truck to be replaced. And we actually do have a twenty-five year plan in place for all our equipment as it starts aging out. And um, the reality is with that, over the next twenty-five years, we'd be looking at seventeen billion dollars. Just to keep up with our equipment, just to keep it replaced and. We're kind of on a, an emergency need, uh, when trucks are needing to be replaced, we gotta try to hurry up and try to scrounge and make something happen, just to stay alive.
Would uh, would you keep the old Quint if you acquired this one, or do you plan on selling it?
We, we would probably just try to trade it in, see what they would give us for it, um, you know. The biggest problem is they, they, the company that we were per- would purchase this other truck from knows of the problems we're having with it. So the question is, is what are they gonna be able to get out of a hundred thousand mile truck that's now twenty-five years old? They might be able to get a hundred thousand for it, but that was after they refurbished it and put the money into it. So it's not a big money maker for them. So we would probably just trade it just to get rid of it, to, to sell it to them.
We're, we're being live streamed, I wonder, are, are we able to pick up this conversation for the audience?
Be better if he stood up there.
Yeah, I think it'd be better.
He, he's fairly well.
Can, can you like sell directly to another department, say a neighboring department or somebody?
We can, we can, we, we do own the truck outright, um. If, if I have a hard time putting my crews up in it and having confidence in it, I'm gonna have a hard time in good faith selling it to another department. Cause let's be honest, St. Leon, New Trenton, uh. Um, Miller York, they, they all have the same struggles with, with equipment and funding and I'm not gonna sell them something that's, that's gonna be in bad shape and.
Sure.
I wouldn't do that to a person. So it, for my, my opinion is the best bet is just to get rid of it and let someone either scrap it. Or they could take off of it, or you know, just do away with it.
And that company would probably have to refurbish.
They would.
Some of that stuff.
Yeah, they would have to go through there and fix essentials, cause um, there's some places that are worse shaped than we are. And they may look at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck is something that they can get by with. Um, you know, in fact, last night I just seen an article, a news story on Westchester uh, Fire Department. They have seven trucks and uh, I believe three of them are down. They're four years out on getting a new truck and they actually just went and was able to scrounge up a used truck just to get by. Because they were leasing a truck from Fairfield Town, from what, yeah, Fairfield Township, so. Yes, sir.
Uh, Chief, I imagine you received as many phone calls as I have from people, but right? Uh, and, and so I'm going to ask the, the obvious question that they're all asking. And uh, I think I understand the answer, uh, short term versus long term and immediate needs, not versus immediate needs. But uh, there's been some meetings in regards to fire districts and funding uh, through that. Can you explain the difference of your need today and, and those, the fire district proposals that are going through?
So let's, let's clarify the first part of it. What we were looking at and talking with the trustees about was a fire territory, not a district. So there's actually two separate entities there and how they function and how they operate. So the fire territory is something that we have just started in the early stages of looking at. Um, basically, it would create a revenue source, not just for staffing, but also for uh, truck and equipment purchases. Is, you may know, everything in the fire industry is time stamped. As soon as you get a piece of equipment, whether it be an air tank, SCBA gear, hoses, everything is time stamped. So you might have ten years on an air pack or fifteen years on an air tank. You might have twelve years on hoses, all these things are time stamped. So we don't get the luxury of, we got something new, hey, we're gonna make this last for the next forty years. It is, no, this, this is timestamped, this should come out of service and be replaced. And if you don't replace things and you have an injured firefighter, they're just gonna come back and say, why are you using expired equipment? You just, it's not supposed to be used, you know, you kind of brought this on yourself. So that's in our forethought of our heads, like, what are we gonna do? Um, on top of if we have equipment fail during a structure fire or during an event, you know, and. Wh- what do we do with this stuff? So the, the funding that we are exploring, which was very early stages of, was. Can this sustain the department? Would it help us be able to be more self-reliant with this funding in place? Um, I'll, I'll be honest with you guys, I am no fan of feeling like I have to come and beg and plead to get equipment just to do our jobs every few years. Um, it, it, it's the one service where you would think that there would be funds available. To buy a new ambulance or to buy a fire truck when you need it, in, instead of having to plead your case, cause in the end, all's we're trying to do is serve the public. We're, we're not out having a vacation property or riding a golf course or anything like that, we're, we're trying to serve people. And, and, and at some point is like, when do we just have the proper funding just to serve people? Hey, we need a truck, look, this is how much it's cost us over the past five years to keep this going. We're busting our humps with volunteers, just trying to keep up with things. When's enough enough? So this gives us another avenue, we, we do serve your guys' area, St. Leon has a TIF district, as I said. And you know, we, we run out to St. Leon for anytime there's a structure fire, we're out there with them. And um, you know, so the, the goal for getting the used truck is to get us by. And honestly, the goal is eight to ten years in hopes that there would be more sustainable funding in place, so we could buy a truck.
And I would like to make it clear that uh, while it's interesting to know about a fire territory, that's not the subject we're dealing with tonight, tonight we're dealing with one. And that's uh, whether we're going to provide the funds necessary to buy the fire truck.
I've got a question, um, you said it's over a hundred thousand miles one you have right now, how many miles is on it?
This, I'm sorry, I'm what?
You have right now, you're replacing.
It, it's got over a hundred thousand on it.
What, what does that mean, is it a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand?
Usually, usually when you get to about a hundred thousand miles, the trucks are pretty much done for. Uh, they need to be reworked quite a bit, quite extensively.
So your odometer doesn't go beyond a hundred thousand?
No, it does.
So what, how many miles does we have on it?
It, it's, I, I would have to go back and actually look at, I believe we're somewhere around a hundred and eighteen thousand miles.
Eighteen?
Yes, sir.
The uh, you talked about a budget that you're, that you have for repairs and spending maybe forty thousand plus sixty thousand this year. Um, and then you twenty thousand, forty thousand in previous years, a lot of money, uh, where does that come from?
It was, came out of our operating budget and we basically had to take away from something else in order to make it happen. So we've been trying for the last three years to replace our failing blacktop around our station and our concrete. Well, that's been about thirty thousand dollars and every year that is the first thing that gets cut. And that's why we still have broken concrete and failing blacktop, because that's where we pull the money from.
In the um, is there anything that keeps you from financing a purchase of a vehicle? Cause what I'm thinking is, is that, you know, yeah, I know a million seven's a lot of money, or a million five, or a million three, or a million, even the six hundred thousand years, of course, a lot of money. Um, what about financing for something like that?
Financing is an option, uh, and it would definitely be looking at that option if we had to. But our problem currently is with the money coming in, we don't have enough money to take on a loan to make that happen. But we are financing currently our, we had to buy two new cots for our ambulances, cause our cots were failing. So we had to finance two new cots over the next five years just to do that. And we set that up to make one payment a year at the beginning of the year. And we basically are gonna be paying out twenties, to be, it's like twenty-seven thousand dollars for the year. At the beginning of every year for the next five years, just to finance these cots. So it, it is an option, um, but quite honestly, we're, we're maxed out of what we got coming in, what, what's going out.
What I find interesting is where that uh, repair money might uh, be, be spent, you know, cause you talk about miles. And it would seem to me like on a fire truck, miles are kind of irrelevant. And you talk about a fire uh, uh, powertrain warranty, kind of irrelevant. Most of the expense I would imagine is your, are your pumps and your hoses and all of the equipment that goes on. It's kind of like a camper, like an RV. I mean, the RV doesn't start running, but the stove stops, refrigerator stops, you gotta repair all that stuff. Uh, is that what you're repairing on most of these things? Is that uh, is that equipment that's on the truck?
A lot of it has um, brakes or a continuous issue on it. Uh, we usually get one year out of the brake drums and pads, shoes, so forth like that. Um, this, the truck that we currently have had, had, came from Texas. Um, so it was actually combined with a sister truck from Texas that they made one good truck out of when we got it. So it was kind of pieced together as it was when, when we received it. Uh, we've replaced a lot of hydraulic rams, uh, hydraulic lines, pump issues, we've had waterways. Uh, fail where they've gotten holes and basically deteriorated, allowed water to start spraying out. We've had seals fail on the truck, um, we've had cooling issues with the truck. So it's, it's across the board of everything, so yeah, it's not necessarily powertrain, as, as it could be a lot of, a multitude of things.
But wouldn't you run into the same problems with a seventeen year old truck that you're buying today?
And they just, then they run into the same problems with brand new trucks unfortunately as well. So we're just hoping to reduce our costs going forward, oh, you know. I don't know how much it's gonna, cause no one knows what's gonna fail next on any of our trucks or any of our ambulances, so.
This process you're going through when you buy a truck, refurbishing, would, would it cure most of those issues?
Do, I'm sorry, no?
The process this truck's going to go through once you've purchased it, uh, the sort of renovation.
Yeah, they will go through, they will, they will check all seals, gaskets, anything like that. And anything that's questionable gets replaced. They also do pump testing on it, so if there's any issues with the pumps, anything like that, any leaks, they will address that. So that kind of takes care of the, the pump side of it. They do an engine maintenance on it, transmission service on it, they find anything in there, they make us aware of it. Hey, we found metal debris or we found this issue with the transmission. You know, how do you want us to proceed, are you guys still interested, or do you want to back out on it, it's gonna need a transmission?
Were you able to do those repairs at the time, you have finances for that?
Um, it, on the new truck? So I mean, we have a small amount of savings that we keep uh, a hold of. And that basically is there in case we have a major equipment failure and have to put money forward for, make the repairs. And with running, you know, ambulances and trucks, we, we kind of have a double edged sword on what's gonna break down.
Uh, the reason I was asking about the mileage, uh, it doesn't seem to me like the uh, the mileage is really what wears the truck out, it's the usage. And if up, you're up in New York and you're running just really short runs, but you're using it to put out a lot of fires. Or a lot of test runs or ambulance runs, that kind of thing, whatever you do, rescue. Um, you know, it seemed to me like that's getting a good, you know, seventeen years of uh, you know, of uh, abuse. I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with the miles.
And that's true, and that's why we would, when we go up and we would look at it, we would look at the hour meter to see how many hours are on it. Cause absolutely a truck can be driven a short distance, but sit there and pump for six hours on a scene and you could run up a lot of time on it. So that is something that's also gonna be looked at is the overall, does the hours meter match the odometer? What it should be saying, or has that truck been sitting out there idling for hours and hours on end? And you basically have a seventeen thousand mile truck that's equivalent to eighty thousand miles on the motor.
I don't know, I just, I guess my question is too, I'm asking myself, is it, you know, how do we, how are we bettering ourselves? Going for a, for a truck that's uh, seventeen years old and uh, getting rid of one that's twenty-five years old, really? You know, I'm not, you know, I haven't, you know, it's low mileage, I get that, I get that, but I'm worried about the rest of it, and you know, so. It, it, it just seems to me kind of, kind of eighteen years, I mean, I, I think in terms of cars and trucks and things like that, but it just seems a little, you know.
It's, it's not a mandate to replace that for twenty-five years, is it, or is it?
It's, it's a recommendation from NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association.
I mean, would there be liability issues if you kept one longer, say, and?
There, there wouldn't be liability issues, it would, it would definitely be looked at if something happened.
That's what I mean, is that gonna be an argument that say, somebody's gonna raise if something goes wrong?
It would be an argument probably, whether it was forcible, because it's not a forcible uh, law or code.
Right.
But they would say, hey, you were aware that this thing was out of date and you were continuing to use it, you know, why did you do that? But you kind of also try to fall back on the fact that you have annual pump testing and ladder inspections and maintenance records on it. And say, we were doing our due diligence, trying to keep the piece of equipment up and running, um.
To have a defense.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, in, in the current one, we know it's got pump issues as well, because it failed on drafting. So if that truck right now had to go to an area where we didn't have fire hydrants to actually pump into it. It would not be able to pull a prime through the pump, so it's gonna need the pump rebuilt at some point, so.
Steve, I like the, the process we're going through here is, uh, ensuring the funding before we do the final due diligence in purchasing the truck, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So just because you have the money doesn't mean this is, this is final, it depends on whether it's a truck that's worthy of your buying.
Correct, and then obviously if we went to see the truck and something doesn't look right, things aren't matching up. Or it's, things were not represented truly on the truck. We're basically going to send you guys a letter saying we'd like to resend our request for funding from you guys.
Are you guys gonna do the inspection yourself then, or?
We, we would do the initial inspection while it's still up in New York. And then the truck actually gets shipped from New York down to Huntsville, Alabama, where Brenly Mountain is at. They go through it, top to bottom, and they do an inspection. At that point, they also give us an option to still back out if they find something major, or they find something really mechanically wrong with the truck. That we didn't see, they can say, hey, we got in there and there's frame rot or something that was painted over and we couldn't tell till we got it up on the lift. And then they make us aware of that. So we also go back down for a second inspection to Brenly Mountain before signing any paperwork. And we would do an inspection there, we would look at everything that they found wrong with it. And we still have an opportunity to back out a second time when we see it in person. So we're not tied to it in any way.
Sure, do you have it, so you don't have any idea how many hours are on the current truck?
No, I do not.
What, do you have an actual budget for equipment repairs every year? Do you set aside money in your budget for equipment repairs?
We do, we, we, we try to, with, with our budget, operating budget on what we can. We, we try to set our trucks somewhere around five to six thousand dollars a year, um, for maintenance.
For truck?
Per truck.
Okay, that's, and that you fell short of that every year.
Yeah, and that's because we had a lot of other trucks that were running into issues. We had an ambulances that were sucking up a lot of money. Uh, we were fortunate enough to get a newer ambulance beginning of this year, so um, between that and our four and a half year old ambulance. We're not throwing as much money at our ambulances as we were as well, so.
Will the, will that four or five thousand, will that suffice for the new truck?
So it, it should, um, and a truck that we got from Brenly Mountain a few years ago. Um, was a two thousand ten uh, Pierce truck. And that has been relatively flawless for us, um, it went through there, it did have one issue when we got it. It was fixed under warranty and it was taken care of and it's been operating okay. That truck actually came from Kansas City, um, and it had about fifty thousand miles on it. And you know, it's, it's still doing good. So our, 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 honestly, our end goal is to, maybe if we can end the year with some money, not all going towards maintenance. We could actually put some money towards fixing our parking lot, so.
Um, I kind of want to go back to your request, so you're asking us for two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
And I believe the request said that the cost was about six hundred thousand, correct?
Yeah, it, cause you gotta figure in shipping and any other things that would have to be changed over on it. Um, Miller Township is using the cumulative fund to help pay for the other portions of it.
Yeah, I think that's, they'll, they'll match the two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, or, or they, they might kick in a little bit more, depending on what is needed to finish.
So, so they're gonna be, what it sounds like, they will be committed to whatever's left to get the truck? So like if it's, if it's six hundred thousand, we're committing two hundred and fifty, they can cover the, the remaining balance?
I believe so.
I will, we'll be talking to them that later. Okay, cause I, you know, I don't want to prove something if you can't buy it.
Obviously, yeah, yeah, but that, that is my understanding. And then we're also willing to, instead of putting this uh, twenty some thousand dollars into repairs. Moving that to help make the purchase of the trucker. You're obviously gonna have some costs associated with equipment switch out, moving the radios over, moving the computer systems over. So you're gonna have a, some equipment switch out fees occurred as well, along with stickers that we're gonna put on there identifying it as our truck, um.
Okay, so is there additional cost associated with all that?
So we're, we're probably gonna be looking at maybe in there four or five thousand dollars past the purchase of the truck, yeah.
What about additional training? Is, is the truck, does it operate the same way?
So yeah, so it, it, it being a different brand, um, there are very, there are varying uh, similarities. But there are, are also some differences, um, but the pump system operates the same as our other engine. So Pierce, which is our other engine that we have at Station Two, um, it's got the same pump system on it. So everybody across the whole department is trained on every truck. So people who know how to operate that engine, they're gonna walk up to this and know how to operate it. They're gonna look at that pump panel and be like, right on it. But regardless, crews still go out and practice with our equipment, you know, every other week we have trainings. Crews get out there and each day crews will go out there and exercise equipment, they will practice on equipment, just to make sure that they are comfortable with it. And then we do, you know, have new people coming on and we slowly introduce them to how things work. So that way, kind of on the volunteer side, you can't rely just on one or two people being able to operate. You kind of have to rely on who's gonna show up to operate that truck. So everybody gets a course in how do, how do you drive a truck? How do you operate a truck, how does it work and so on and so forth, so. But there are some differences with this versus the other truck.
But that's all you have in mind to pay for all that?
We do.
How many fire runs does Wright Fire make in a year?
I mean, what, I'm sorry?
How many runs do you make a year?
So our fire runs, um, last year we did six hundred and thirty-four fire runs. So of them calls, forty of them were structured fire calls, uh, thirty-three were traffic accidents with injuries, forty-four were unknown traffic in, um. Unknown car accidents, unknown on injuries, uh, mutual aid calls were thirty-three mutual aid calls. That means thirty-three times other departments called us to come help them. And this year we're floating as of July first, uh, we have twenty-two uh, traffic accidents with injuries. Um, we have eighteen injuries with unknown, uh, and then we were at eighteen structured fires. And this was at the first of July that these numbers were released to us. So we're pretty much tracking on course, just with them three runs about the same. I would say if you look at our runs over the past four or five years, we haven't gained leaps and bounds, uh, which is a good thing. But we've s- slowly steadily increased every year, our runs keep going up. Yes, sir.
Do you have financials that we? Do you have financials that we could look at or kind of?
I do not. I, I don't have any of that on me.
And I think we've established probably miles isn't the best indicator for a truck, but about how many miles do you put on the truck a year?
Um, it, it, it really depends on what station it's coming out of. Station one. Um, would probably be the busiest.
Well, this truck.
This truck would, would be the busiest one. So I would say, um, ten to fifteen thousand miles would, would probably be.
Okay. So you, so ideally if you got this truck, it would be in service for, for quite some time still.
Oh yeah, that's, that's the plan. Like I said, worst case scenario for us is realistically looking out of it, at it. As if we can, um, work on getting solid funding to come up with a replacement plan. That is something that we're attempting to do. And then if we can get another eight to ten years out of this truck, that'll give us time to save up. And kind of look at some better options at that point in time.
Like that, something that you put place to address.
Yeah. And like I said, we, we do have a current sheet that we have came up with. We identified trucks. Where we're at in timelines, what we're going to need to be doing, replacing things. And quite honestly, it, it, it's just not feasible for us to even have that sheet in some aspect because. Over the next twenty-five years, we don't know where we're going to get over seventeen million dollars from just to replace trucks. So. We gotta come up with something.
Jim, I'm going to apologize. Uh, I know you wanted to talk about the truck only, but I do, I do have, we're talking funding here. And this is down the road, uh, that they're going to continue to de dollars. And being this is live stream, people maybe get some answers about the, uh, the fire territory. And if that was put into place, how would it be put into place? And what kind of tax dollars would be generated? And what would them tax dollars be used for?
So the, the, the fire territory, like I said, there's not really set numbers yet. We had talked to Baker Tilly. They come in and they basically did a tax assessment, said this is the number of homes you have in the area. This is where you would be at. It, it would basically, how a territory would work would be, we would come up with a budget. And tell them, hey, this is the number we need to operate. And how a fire territory works is you get one opportunity to apply for it. So when we apply and ask for funding, that money has to last us, last us as long as the fire territory is in place. The state of Indiana does not make it so you can go back and ask for additional proceeds. To come from the state or increase the revenue you get from it. It's, it's a one-time deal. So it's very hard to look at it and saying. Hey, we're going to need this in fifteen years or we're going to need this in eighteen years. But what we did was we did come up with that sheet of what trucks are going to need to be replaced over the next twenty-five years. That gives us an idea of funding that's going to be needed. And then we are also looking at. How many firefighters would we need on duty? And we're trying to be really, uh. You know, honest and straightforward with it. We, we don't need a ton of firefighters on duty to cover our area. You know, if we can get three or four people on and then we have a squad crew, so that way we can roll a fire truck and an ambulance to a scene. That's what the people deserve is to have a truck right out the gate, coming to their house, whether it's a structure fire or not, or whether it's a car accident. Because you know, you can only do so much with an ambulance on a scene till you get a fire crew there to cut someone out of a car. So you, you kind of need both in the end. And that's kind of the direction the state was going with some changes coming up to the LIT money. Is you're going to be able to do fire and EMS out of it and hopefully be able to do some funding. So we don't have solid numbers yet and I, I would probably not be. Um, comfortable just throwing out numbers because honestly, I don't, I don't know numbers off the top of my head yet. Nothing has been set in stone. Um, the township trustees and us, we very early talks of what we're looking at to make this happen. But I do know we were looking at, hey, what are we going to need in twenty-five years that we anticipate in trucks? Let's at least get that funding put in place. And then what will we need to, you know, come from the fire territory to help with some staffing issues? And I will say this, I know it's, I don't want to hijack it with your territory meeting or, or with that information with your meeting. But a, a fire territory does a lot more than just provide funding. It changes the whole aspect of the fire department and how it operates. Right now, let's be in a five oh one C three department. And we don't qualify for any state retirement or benefits like that through the state. We don't, we don't get anything extra. We're, we're just a company. We're no different than a subway, sitting there asking the state for money. We, anytime someone's over forty hours, you gotta pay them overtime. But you get into a fire territory, that opens up. Retirement access to your employees. You could actually a- attract people. It also helps your grant opportunities on a federal level to be able to apply for more grants. Cause right now. We're limited on the grants that we can apply for and the funding that we can get. So. Also it allows you to fall under the hours of actual fire hours, which allows for firefighters to work fifty-three hours. Instead of forty hours a week and having to pay them overtime. So you can actually run twenty-four, forty-eight hour shifts. And not have to pay someone eight hours of overtime. So there's, there's a broad spectrum that the fire territory changes, um. Along with funding and then, you know, and it allows for money, and quite honestly, that is captured up in that area just to stay within that area.
And thank you for that answer. So just, just so we're clear, the fire department would work with the trustees. To gather this information and applies to the state?
Yeah, it, we, we work with the trustees and we, we were going to come up with a budget with the trustees of. Hey, this is what we think's a reasonable budget. This is what we're going to need to operate. This is what we're going to need down the road. And Baker Tilly will take them numbers and actually go back and be like, this is what we're looking at. This is what tax rate would have to be. Or whatever, because you, you know, you can ask for up to point four for a fire territory. Doesn't mean we necessarily want to go in there and ask for point four. We're, we're not out trying to make money. That, it's not our business to make money. We're actually a not-profit. So we don't want extra money sitting around, but we need to ask for enough money that where we can be sustainable for the future. And it, it, it's no, you know, secret, our area is growing. I mean, you can look at the census studies. Our area is predicted to be the highest growing area in Dearborn County. That, that's the reality of it.
Sure.
And I'll be honest with you, nothing against you guys, I hate politics. I absolutely hate politics. I don't want to be part of politics. I hate that the fire department is politics. I hate that we get drug into politics and get put in there. Well, if you guys get equipment. Then that means we're going to build more. The same rumors that were going around on Facebook that. We are not here to tell people they can live there in that area or not. That is not our job. We are just there to provide a service. That is all we want to do and we want to be left out of everything else.
Well, we don't like politics either. Uh, I felt like it was important to get this out in a public meeting that's on video. People can go watch and hear what was just said here. So good luck with whatever you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
Well, you had mentioned that you would have to put a budget together. So you, don't you currently have some sort of a budget?
Oh yeah, we have an operating budget. You, you mean for a?
For your departments, I mean, how, I mean, you've got a budget that you use every year that you work off of?
Correct. Yeah. And every year them budgets that they get. Put in at the end of the year, looked at, examined, the financial board looks at it. Trustees can get a copy of it and they can see what we spent. And what we're planning on spending next year.
Are, are you required to fire a report with the state on your operating?
Yeah, that's what our tax accountant does. So we have a tax accountant that takes all our funds coming in. And going out and then she files that with the state.
Cause I, I couldn't find it when I was looking online.
Yeah, that's, I don't personally deal with that side of it. That, that is why we have a tax accountant that does that stuff.
Okay.
So.
Is there anything else from inclusion?
This is, I don't, this doesn't directly apply to this, but I think in the future, I don't know if we can change this application. Cause I would like to see some budgets and maybe some additional numbers for the future. Obviously it's too late to ask for it now, but. I don't know if we can change that process, but I see a budget, maybe some information on the fire truck he's buying, you know, cause. Don't have any of that.
I agree. Thank you, Chief. I got another meeting. We've had one request to speak and that's from, uh. Patricia Little, the North Township trustee. I think rather than wait for later, this would be a good time to hear from you if you wouldn't mind. As you would, speak your name into the microphone.
My name's Patricia Little. I'm the Miller Township trustee. Thank you for, um. Allowing me to speak today. Um. I, as Miller Township trustee, we, um, provide fire services. That's our job, trustees, is to provide fire and EMS protection to the residents of our township. And Miller Township has just under. Ten thousand residents. Our, um. Fire, um, and back in, um, twenty twenty, my unit. Uh, adopted a cumulative fire fund. We began, we saw that there was not sufficient funding. To replace equipment and we adopted a cumulative fire fund in twenty twenty. At a rate of point zero three three three. Uh, and we began receiving that in twenty twenty-one. Um, in twenty twenty-one, we, we received a hundred and eighty thousand, just over a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, in twenty twenty-two, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-eight. Twenty twenty-three, a hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine sixty-one. Twenty twenty-four, two hundred thousand, three twenty-two. And projected receipts this year, two hundred three thousand, one hundred ninety-two. Those funds, we have used, um, the truck that Kendall talked about that's at station two. Miller Township purchased that truck with the money from the cumulative fund. We spent two hundred forty-nine thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. Paid for that cash and that belongs to the people of Miller Township. The residents own it, the fire department uses it. They have a use agreement with us. In twenty twenty-four. Um, Miller Township. And in hopes to extend the life of the Quint, we purchased an additional truck that Bright didn't have. So we. Spent a hundred forty thousand dollars from the cumulative fund to purchase the rescue truck. Um, and an additional forty-two thousand, five hundred twenty dollars for extrication equipment. That was not in our area. We had, um, Bright requested it and we had, because we had. Accidents where people were stuck in the vehicle and we had to wait for other surrounding departments to come with their equipment to cut people out. So that equipment goes with that rescue truck and we spent another twenty thousand. To Miller York Department for radio replacement. So, um, we've been saving. We do not have, uh, we knew that, uh, the trucks are coming down the road, but we're the only department putting money away. Um, into a cumulative fund. For fire purchases. So even if, um. We're not, I don't have enough right now today to purchase that truck. I have part of the funds, but not all of the funds. And if we can get in agreement with the neighboring territories to add. Uh, to become part of a fire territory, that would establish a cumulative fund in each of the three townships. Besides Miller.
Ma'am, excuse me one moment.
But that would not be till twenty twenty-seven.
I just want to break you over a moment. We normally allow a speaker three minutes. I, 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 I'm able to authorize you more. I'd like to do that because I want to hear the rest of you want to say.
Okay. Um, that, that revenue would not be available. So if we, if we. Can agree upon this, if the figures come in and the township boards vote to move forward. After having public hearings with our people, with a fire territory, those funds would not be available until twenty twenty-seven. So, um. And they're not as, they're, they're, they don't have as much assessed evaluation. So probably we're looking at. Um, maybe three hundred thousand coming in a year in twenty twenty-seven if all three townships have. Or a little over three hundred thousand a year, if all three townships added a cumulative fund. What we have done to date is we've been able to replace equipment without incurring debt. And when you ask Kendall about if he can take, take on debt to. Um, purchase equipment. Um, uh, my father-in-law, uh, the former commissioner was trustee before me. And I spoke with him about this and he said, when Wright purchased equipment many, many years ago. The townships had to go to the bank to say, this is what's coming in, in revenue. From the townships that will be able to cover the cost of these loans. So he can't, he can't really borrow money unless. We go with him to say, this much is coming in in tax dollars. So let me just give you an idea. His, the, the contract, um, with Bright this year is to receive. A hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars from my fire fund. And, um, thirty-six, seven fifty from my general fund. So we're talking about two hundred twenty-eight thousand. Dollars. If he spends forty thousand on fixing that old truck, that's seventeen and a half percent. Of his annual budget, put, put money on fixing an old truck. And I've spoken to the state board of accounts and I said, can, can we spend, can I spend money from the cumulative fund? For repair of an old piece of equipment? And their answer is no. So I can't spend it to repair that. And I think almost, there's not really anyone. Who could say they would be confident spending. Uh, seventeen to twenty percent of their annual salary on repairing an old vehicle for their own use. And I, I'm not necessarily confident doing that for the township. We relied on the expertise of the fire department when they inspected the trucks we purchased before. And our hope with that was. To save the tax dollars, say, say the taxpayers' money by not having to pay. Um, loan payments, interest payments, and to buy time to be able to save money. While having reliable equipment available to the department for the people of our township. So. That's what I have for you. And I'm.
Well, let me ask you one question. Uh, are, are you supporting the purchase of this truck?
I, uh, because the timeline is short, I had to meet with my, um. Board and two of the three voted to move forward. So. That passes. Yes, sir.
Why hasn't Logan and Harrison responded with any kind of like funds?
They don't, they don't have a cumulative fund. They, that's not something that they wanted to do. So. I can't speak to that, but I can say this, on behalf of Harrison Township. Um, when they were talking about adding a next of the TIF in Bright, I talked to the attorney. At the state of Indiana, um, for the Indiana Township Association. And I asked the question. If a new TIF is formed, if, if Harrison Township wanted to add a cumulative fire fund. Um, after that TIF is formed, would the properties, uh, would all of Harrison Township pay into, um. The cumulative fund? And the answer was no. Only if, if a township becomes part of a fire territory. Then the whole township can collect, the whole, every property would pay into. The fund for replacing equipment. But with TIF districts, they're get excluded. So a lot of her area would be excluded from paying in toward capital equipment. Purchases at this point, unless we form a territory. Okay? Okay?
Any other questions?
Uh, just a comment that was brought up about the growth, the biggest, that's the biggest growth and that, and counting out that way. So that, that means that far.
Okay, and so that's, that's, there's another thing, Logan Township, but like, so we're all subject to max levy. And Denise is and I am, her growth has been in businesses, my growth is not enough to exceed, we've had some growth, but we have a much larger population, so we have to grow more to exceed the state's average. Logan Township has exceeded the state average, so they can request more than the maximum levy, so, but we're limited in what we can ask for increases in fire wise, okay?
So what I was going to say was is, as the population grows, the, the, the tax territory money grows. That's all I want to say.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, anybody got questions, I'm happy to.
So I'm going to bring this back to the commission.
Should we ask anybody else wants to speak?
We put up. You all, I can hear more. We have the option of opening for others to speak if, if there is someone in the audience who wants to speak. We have put out requests to speak, I got one. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Would you come up and put your name, your name and according to our bylaws, you'd have three minutes. It wouldn't take three minutes, but, but. Well. Congratulations.
My name is Kathy Keith, I live in Bright. I was at the Logan trustee meeting last week at the library, that was pretty explosive and interesting. My question is this, I, I listened to what the chief said, I don't think anybody at that meeting has an issue with supporting fire department at all, I myself have used you twice thankfully. My question is, the chief made a point that he provides mutual aid to Harrison. And we pay for that, we paid Harrison for that.
Harrison or West Harrison?
West Harrison, but we have an agreement with Harrison Fire Department, that we can provide mutual aid to them. And then Harrison Fire Department in return, they provide mutual aid to us, so if our ambulances are out of the area. They will actually send an ambulance up and if we request them during the like hours or whatever. They will send an engine or a truck to us for a structure fire or car wrecks.
One of the points that you made at that meeting was Dearborn County gives them money to do that?
Correct, the county themselves pays Harrison Township and that is to cover that area on the other side of the river, that's part of them.
And you mentioned that they tried, they're trying to claw that money back to the county, to Dearborn? And you said it would be nice if we could get that money.
Well, there, there was discussion of.
And I wondered how that would work.
Is how that would, how would that be covered by Indiana Department? And what it would cost and the county, obviously for us to build a station, staff that can put trucks down there. You'd be up here compared to what they are currently paying Harrison, so they just continue to pay Harrison for them services.
Okay, so it would rely on us having that, okay.
Correct, you would not want to, like even if you were a resident in West Harrison and lived on State Street. You wouldn't want to have Wright come all the way down to Hill and Jameson when you have a fire department across the street from you to respond. So that's, that's kind of, until that there is another station down there. It is kind of a mute point as to whether we would cover it or not, because in the fire service, everything is time driven. Who could get there the quickest, rapid response and it wouldn't make sense for us to go down there, wouldn't make financial sense for a response.
So then I have one tiny other question and that is, when I saw the TIF plan and write up and everything that was presented up right elementary, the second bullet I think was to give that TIF money to public safety, this seems to be a public safety. And here we are.
We're, we're, we're sitting there right now.
Got it, that's all I had.
You still have sixteen seconds. But, but. Thank you for being, I think the first one I've seen this year who came to support something. Is there anyone else? We're closing this off to you all, is there anyone who wants to offer an opinion? Anyone who wants to discuss a, any, anything that they've heard tonight, any questions from this room? And if there is none, our next step is to challenge someone to make a motion to either support or deny this request.
I motion to approve the right fire department's request for assistance. The amount of two hundred fifty thousand.
There is motion on the floor to support this request. At this point, I'd ask for a second.
Trevor mentioned it earlier. The timing of this, it's, I've been through this before in Ohio County.
Yeah.
People want to say something, tell you that's priced tonight, I don't like this part of it. And he mentioned also that there should be more information, which I think we should request as we move forward with these type of applications and grants, but I will second his motion.
Motion on the floor, made and seconded, and at this point, I open this again for questions.
What about discussion? What do we do now, I'm not familiar with.
Uh, well, if, if anyone has, if, if there's any member here who wants to say something about the motion, you have the right to do that. If not, we're going to vote.
Well, I think the, I don't think it's a very good deal, I don't think it's a very good deal, I certainly don't think it's something to do in any urgency. You know, with taking the same five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars and putting it down on a brand new truck, payment would be over twenty five years. Would be about five thousand dollars a year. And, you know, the right now, we're looking at buying a seventeen-year-old piece of equipment that is probably going to consume at least that five thousand dollars a month, excuse me, it's going to consume at least that, you know, in, in terms of extra maintenance and so forth. I just don't, I, I just don't see the urgency of it and I don't see why we would do it, and my vote would be no for those reasons. I don't think we're being approached with something that's been well thought through.
What fund would this come out of?
This would come out, is could come out of, let me grab that. This could still come out of the West Harrison TIF.
What?
Uh, and it could come out of either the West Harrison TIF or the, or the, or the mill. But both of those are, or come out, could come out of our cash, which I hope it doesn't.
And how much money of that did we have already committed to other projects?
Well, you've got.
Yes, to me, it looks like we don't have any money, so I'm, I'm just putting it out there that we're already committed to other projects.
The other.
And I, I sure don't want, I thought we would take this under advisement and have an executive session, quite honestly, on this.
Well, actually, it doesn't fit in an executive session or we would have had one.
Yeah.
You can also look at the schedule of income we have. And the one thing that told me that we could afford this was that we were prepared to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a road. Come out of that same fund and now we're applying for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to pray that, which would kind of be the money we would use.
Also.
I was not in the impression that it was the, the equipment was seventeen years old and the limit is twenty five years, the recommended limit of usage. It just seems to me like it just doesn't seem like a good deal and I mean, I, I know that we're not supposed to, you know, making those determinations. But I think we do have a responsibility to make sure that the TIF funds are used for investments in the future. And it doesn't seem like this is a very, very much of an investment in the future.
Mike, you were about to say something.
I just got context, one of the line items in your business report, I was in the business report, is the the tip on principal balance of White Water Mill allocation area, that's eight hundred thirty three thousand approximately today. That'll be paid off about two hundred twenty five thousand for a year, each year through the early thirties. Although it shows eight hundred thirty three being committed there because that's ultimately what you'll pay for its full interest if you continue to stick to the organization schedule on that. You're going to have additional revenue come in, which is why we got.
The reason that TIF allocation fund for White Water Mill shows a negative balance is because we still, still have so much on that bond, which you paid off each year. And that, that was, that's, I know it's subtracted, but you have that negative.
So with this, there's a quick question, if we, I know they want some sort of answer today. If we vote this down, can they come back after they've done more research?
At a regular meeting?
Answered some more questions? Is that, is that possible for them to do?
It is, the, the reason we're having this meeting is because they indicated that our decision was timely.
And, and I think, I agree with Tom, I think there's some more questions and maybe even some more options that need to be looked at.
Yeah, I, I was thinking, we got a meeting next week, correct?
Yes.
Not put this in an executive session.
We cannot.
It does not qualify for executive session.
The meaning is the following, yeah.
I, I, I don't disagree with anything you said, Mr. TV, not at all, but, and they made it perfectly clear, new engines four years out, correct? New engines four years out, so for four years, we're going neck on dime, this twenty five year fire truck. At, and the new fire truck, whether we bought a new one or this one, you mentioned the five thousand dollar material costs, whatever, you're probably going to have that on a new truck as well, am I wrong? So, I, I'm going to be just, just to throw that out there, that some of the costs you brought up are going to happen with a new truck as well.
But because of the urgency, it sounds like there wasn't a whole lot of, I mean, this just all come, sort of came together, correct?
Yeah, and.
And so, I mean, up until, what, a month ago, two months ago, it wasn't even on the radar to replace this truck.
It, it was on our radar to replace it down the road.
Down the road, right?
But with ours, when it failed again and it has been out of service more than it has been in service this summer, it was like, well, what are we going to do with another twenty thousand dollars that we have faced? So the call went out to a broker for trucks and he said, I happen to have one that's going to be coming available, the urgency comes from there are so many departments looking for trucks right now, because no one can wait three or four years, there's departments without trucks right now waiting. And he was like, if you wanted to put on a hold this, we'll give you two weeks to hold it. And that's what he did, he gave us two weeks to try to get the funding together, I talked to Mike, he sent me the application and we did that, I talked with trustees.
No one's seen this truck, right? You don't even know how many hours they're on it.
Right, we have not seen that truck.
But, but, but he also said that if that don't meet what they want, they won't buy.
But is there a contingency in our motion for that? Or are we making a motion to give money out that not being returned? I, I want to know what the contingency is and, and how that would work if we're making the motion to give money out.
With a point where that motion can be modified to include that contingency?
I would definitely.
And that, and that's, and that's the reason we paused to talk about this.
Sure, sure.
And I know, just from being on, sitting on the Roaring MS board. They, they're dealing with the same thing with life squads, waiting, there's a two to three year wait on a life squatters, as, a new life squad as well. So some, some, some towns are having to go up and just buy used because they need one now. So.
And just back up and answer maybe some of the public too, we, we have given some money already to the fire department, a very small amount. Uh, for radios and things like that, and we have done some things for the park district already too. So we have kept all those things that we've said in, at the bright meeting in the forefront to do. But we have other projects that came before all that too, and I, I just want to make sure we're not sidestepping things and it's going to blow up in our face.
But actually, we're okay. Fair enough.
Okay, you know, I, I go with that, but I would definitely, just, I, I want to see the motion upon the contingency that this truck.
Question two would be, is there any, any way we can ask that they, that they go and look at this equipment? And actually evaluate it onsite and then maybe report back to us and for our regular meeting. And then give a commitment for financing because it, it just, it.
Well, that begs the question, Chief. The money you're requesting, I understand the deadline, but let, let's say for some reason, somebody else said you've got money, you're still going to go look at it regardless?
Probably.
Probably, I, I don't understand that part.
As to decide whether we want to pursue it or not, but at some point, it's like it's not worth it for us to go up there and look at it if we don't have the funds available to purchase it. So, you know, ob- obviously you would like to look at something before you even have the mindset, but they're only holding it for, for two weeks and if I can have some mindset that, hey, I have the, the funds to make it happen, we go up and look at the truck. And it's in great shape, then I know I can put a deposit on the truck and hold it and then we can move forward with the purchasing of it. But if I go and look at it and it's a piece of junk or it's not what it was advertised as. I'm going to come back and send Mike a letter saying, please resend our grant request, we decided not to move forward with this purchase.
How much is the deposit?
Uh, they have not given that to us yet, but generally it's about five thousand dollars.
Would it be suitable if we were to add to the motion that it be contingent on approval of the, the what do you call, this being, this being a suitable fire truck?
And, and that would go all the way to the second place down in Alabama, which would have to make it approved.
Because no payment has to be made until the contract is signed and the truck could get ready to be shipped, so we would inspect them a second time before leaving.
I would be okay if they would make that contingency all the way through.
So. So when we did this before with that company, the fire department put the money down for the deposit, so they, they put their butt on the line and their money on the line with the deposit. And then after the second inspection, the township paid the money and reimbursed them for the for the deposit, so. Because it's, you know, the same company where, where you go, you inspect and then you say, yes, we're interested, so we put a deposit. Then it goes through, it's.
So you're saying you don't need the money until the purchase has been signed for and completed?
Correct, right before they ship it from Alabama, which would be in a few months, is when the payment would be.
So, uh, we do have a motion on the floor, been seconded, we're in this, in the discussion period, but we need to get serious about this motion.
I think we. Motion stance, I.
I think we all want some sort of modification or amendment to the current motion.
So, you made the motion, you want to add to the motion?
Uh, I'll add to the motion, so I move that we approve the the fire department, right fire department's request for funding for two hundred fifty thousand contingent upon satisfactory inspection that sufficient and completed purchase.
And completed purchase. And you made the second, would you second? And you made the second, uh, would you second the change to move?
I didn't make the second.
Be there. I made the second, but I will accept them additions, changes.
With the motion changed, is there any further discussion? If not, a call for the vote. All the papers say aye.
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 Opposed? Both. And the motion is approved. Interesting. And, uh, I'd like everyone to stay while I do one more thing so they don't throw me in jail. As a recipient of federal funds and supported different counties, Zebus to ensure non-discrimination, equal access to all citizens. They kind of gather statistical data regarding participants in county activities. We got to read this every time. Therefore, we provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting and you're not required to complete the survey. However, the form is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and the ADA. You guys who, I remembered.
Thanks.
Uh, yes, sir.
I just, I don't know if we can do it tonight, but I think we need to do it at our next meeting is the, uh, meeting decorum rules.
Yes.
That we received in an email and it's in our packet tonight. I don't know if everyone's read over them, but I, I think this needs to be adopted as soon as possible.
It has been.
Just a reminder.
Oh, okay.
Above thirty before you were on the board, Doug.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was under the impression we had to, not, okay.
It's, it's there.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, is there any other business to be brought before this commission's evening? If not, this may be adjourned.